Please. All right, we good to go, guys?
Yeah.
All right. It is seven o'clock, so we will call to order this regular school board meeting of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District. Tracy, can we have a roll call, please?
Carrie Alice.
Here.
Justin Thomas.
Yeah.
Tara Bowman. Scott Hoff.
Here.
Cory Jones.
Here.
Matt Mecca.
Here.
Amy Wild.
With six members in attendance, we do have a quorum this evening. The mission statement of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District is to ensure that students excel with intellect and virtue, inspired by innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Any additions, subtractions, or changes? Anyone wishes to see the agenda this evening? Hearing none. All those in favor of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Public comment. Anyone wishing to speak tonight? Just bring me up the pink sheet now or later, or whatever. We know everybody was here, so no problem. Thanks, Sue.
Test. Since that awful day in April, I have tried to keep quiet, but I feel I can no longer do so. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Sue Fisher. I'm a teacher in the Palmyra Eagle School District, who just finished her 33rd year. I do not live in the district, but the Palmyra Eagle District has been my home for the past 33 years. I have no children of my own, but I consider the students of the Palmyra Eagle School District as my kids. As a matter of fact, most of you sitting here at the table are some of those kids. I need to ask a few questions. I know you as board members have a really tough job, especially this past year. It's been one that I would not want to have to go through in your position. But I do want to ask you to reconsider voting to go to dissolution. I'm not asking for myself. I'm an adult. I'll find another job, or I'll find another career. But what keeps me up at night, and what makes me cry on an almost daily basis, is the students of Palmyra Eagle High School. On behalf of the students, or my kids, please consider delaying going to dissolution. If we as adults feel helpless, I can't even imagine how the students feel. They are having their choice of school ripped away from them. Most of the students of this district do not want to go to a different, bigger school. They deserve your due diligence. I'm not blaming you, the board, for the failed referendum. The public showed that they were not in favor of that. But have we even asked the taxpayers, do you want the Palmyra Eagle District to dissolve? From talking to people in this community, hardly anyone believes that this will happen, and most do not want it to happen. If that question was on a ballot, I'm guessing that the outcome of that vote would have been a lot different. If we go to dissolution, we lose all local control, and there's no going back. I want to ask you, before you vote for dissolution of this district, have you done everything possible to save heart or all of the district? Maybe we could and should use this upcoming year to explore alternative scenarios, and we could join with other districts and communities in the state to change the rules and funding situations for schools. Let's fight for our kids, your kids, till the end. As I found out last week on the march from Palmyra to Madison, as I carried the banner to proudly represent Palmyra Eagle High School, I found that we have a lot of people who are willing to fight with us. We have people all over the state who will support us. Please, let's use this year to try to highlight the failure of the current system and work to change it. I thank you for listening, and I ask you to consider not voting to go to dissolution at this time.
Anyone else wish to speak tonight? Yeah, thanks, Sue. Thank you. What's that? Oh, I'm always happy to hear from you. You're always invited.
Thank you, Sue, for making me cry before I got up here. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Tara Leroy. First and foremost, I also want to thank the board. I know you certainly didn't sign up for this, and don't deserve the pressures that you've dealt with over the course of the last year. And I thank you for giving of yourselves in the face of such adversity, much of which has been unkind to all of us, really, but thank you. Thank you also to the district, especially the board members who attended the kickoff on Saturday, June 22nd, for the March to Madison rally for the public education funding. I realize it was really short notice, and I appreciate being able to reserve use of the gym. Fortunately, Mother Nature didn't rain on us, and we were able to host the event outside, which was great because participation level on such short notice, I think, was greater than we had hoped for. I loved seeing your picture, by the way, on the front page of the Union. That was one of my favorite pictures throughout the course of the event. I think this... Palmyra was host to so many who came here and heard our story for the very first time. From the rally on Saturday to the finale at the Capitol on Tuesday, our story has been shared over and over again, and heard by thousands of people all across the state. And I was proud to see our Panthers standing atop the Capitol stairs as a voice for change, and an example of just how badly the state is failing all of our kids. During the course of this march, I was able to connect with public education advocates from all over. I was able to speak one-on-one with the superintendent of the largest district in the state of Wisconsin, which was pretty amazing, that 760 kids and 76,000 kids, we all share many of the same problems, and we all desperately need change to best educate and treat our children. Some of the things I learned along the way is that contrary to what a small corner of our district would have, many people believe our district is not alone in our struggles, and we did not reach this point because of anything that you guys did poorly, or incorrectly, or failing to do your job. We can thank legislators and uninformed voters for creating unnecessary burdens on all districts across the state. People really needed and wanted to hear our story here, as a prime example of the many, many things that are wrong with our state's current educational funding formula, and the drive for change that would benefit not just our kids, but all kids across the state. And I think we have a great opportunity to drive that change and make things happen for the better for everyone, even if we're the sacrificial lambs right now. Without education funding changes, dissolution of our district would see our kids no better off in two years in another district than they are right now. So many others I talked to are just one vote away from a referendum year, from having these same conversations. If you look at East Troy and Fort Atkinson and Maguannago, who are all currently in preparation mode to going to referendum. Kettle Moraine, who lost theirs and has already cut programs that we're still able to offer here. Jefferson referendum expires shortly, and Whitewater is set to expire in 22 school year. So, we can disperse our kids, and we can fool ourselves into thinking it's going to be better, but it's not. And unless we take this opportunity to do something and take advantage of the supporters that we have across the state right now, I don't think anything's going to change for anyone. And our students and our communities aren't going to be better off elsewhere. Silence is acceptance, and we should not be silent on what is happening, here or across the state. We are here because of a failure at a state level to provide adequate funding, and we're victims of enrollment rules that punish rural districts like ours. If we vote tonight to dissolve, we lose all local control of our community's greatest assets, our schools, and the future of our children. Voting to dissolve allows DPI to establish procedures and rules that can further hurt our community. And as no school was dissolved before, I have to believe there are no hard and fast rules to be followed here. What would the state do if you didn't vote to dissolve tonight? What could they do to us? They can't make it much worse than it already is. What's the worst that could happen if you all said no tonight? We're here because the state and the legislators are not doing their job, and we need to be a voice, and we need to stand together, and we need to drive some change. We know we have funding for this coming year, and I agree with Sue in that we should take this year, a full year, to explore alternative options, work with the other districts and communities right now that have our back, that are willing to work with us and willing to be a voice with us. Right now, we have something that we didn't a few months ago, and that's, we have a spotlight in the front of education advocates, statewide support from all of them. And they are calling loudly for rules to be changed, and schools all over the state to receive adequate funding. They are in our corner, the governor's in our corner, the lieutenant governor and the state treasurer both spoke in support of change at our march. We can use this support to launch a very public and widespread campaign to both find funds for our school, whether it be through donations, grants, sponsors, whatever, get creative with what we do have, whether it be a four-day school week, closing buildings, getting sponsors, whatever, and highlight the many problems that Wisconsin has with its current funding system. And I want to quote Dr. Bloom's own words from our district website. He says, "While there are certainly challenges ahead of us, I know that there are not insurmountable, and collectively, we will move our district into a preferred future." This is again our mission statement, to ensure students excel with intellect and virtue, inspired by innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual. Our first obligation is to our students, and whether that's 600 or 1,600. We can ensure they excel with intellect and virtue if we ourselves are not inspired to be innovative in the face of diversity. The question on the ballot did not ask if the community wanted the district dissolved. We can't serve our students and our community by sending them off to neighboring districts who already are burdened with inadequate funding, who are cutting staff and programs, who are already refusing to accept some of our special needs kids, and who may also be one vote away from having this very same conversation in their boardrooms. So I ask one last time to vote against dissolution tonight, work collectively amongst yourselves, amongst the community. You know I will be there in the forefront to advocate for our kids and our community. And let's move forward into a preferred future, not one laid out for us by people with no local connection or understanding of our community, our culture, and the unique needs of our kids that our district currently provides. Thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else wish to speak this evening? No? Okay. All right. Administrators' reports. Carrie is not here. Oh, Carrie, you got anything tonight? All good? Okay. All right. Consent agenda, handled as a singular motion and vote. To hear a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, as it is. Second.
Questions about any of the items? All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Action item A, the excitement of the year, guys. Approval of the item A, approval of the 2019-2020 milk contract to Mapleton Dairy.
Move to approve of the 2019-2020 milk contract to Mapleton Dairy.
Second.
All in favor? Any questions? Yeah. All right. All in favor, this is a... This one's an easy one. All right. Next one, approval of the 2019-2020 bread contract to Panagol.
Move to approve of the 2019-2020 bread contract to Panagol. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Action item C, consider approval of the 2019-2020 food and supply contract to Fox... Performance Fox River.
I'll make the motion to consider approval for the 2018-2020 food and supply contract to Performance Fox River. Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Carrie's. Action item D, consider approval of the P E A S D Student Academic Standards Notice for the 2019-2020 school year.
Motion to approve P E A S D Student Academic Standards Notice for 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
Questions or comments about this one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Action item E, consider approval of resolution ordering dissolution of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District. I will read the resolution, and then we'll take a motion on it. Resolution ordering dissolution of the school district, whereas the Palmyra Eagle Area School District is a legally constituted school district under state Wisconsin statutes, and whereas the district sought by referendum held on April 2nd, 2019, to exceed the state imposed revenue limits on a nonrecurring basis for five years totaling $11.5 million, and whereas the referendum failed to pass, and whereas the district's financial condition calls into question its ability to continue to operate, and whereas the Board of Education of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District passed a resolution considering dissolution of the school district on April 8th, 2019, and whereas a certified copy of the resolution considering dissolution was filed with the Secretary of the School District Boundary Appeal Board within five days after it was adopted. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District that item one, the board orders dissolving the school district, and item two, all steps necessary to continue and complete the dissolution process be taken in a timely manner as provided for in Wisconsin statutes, chapter 117. This would be adopted by the school board and recorded this first day of July. So, to have a conversation about it, I would hear a motion to approve the resolution as read. In a second, please.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution as read. Second.
Okay. So, I guess I'll start, since everybody's looking this way. You're right, Sue, I am your kid. And I'm Tammy's kid. And I'm Vic's kid. And I'm friends of a whole bunch of you. I get it. I have to pull four kids out of here. I get it, 100%. I shared with as many people as I could. Mr. Wedge is here, Sue is here, Tammy is here. Anybody who's asked, the numbers are out there. We've shared what we can. We can't do this following the let-them-go idea. The let's just stick this out and let Waukesha County just go off on its own, because the assets that sit in this side of the county line outweigh the assets on that side of the county line. Yet, the tax base between the two counties is roughly 50/50. So whatever would be left over as a district, we have to buy out the other half. That's not feasible. That was the way we were going to win five years ago, and defeat the annexation petitions. We were going to use that same logic, and now it's going to be, it's the same reason we can't do this. All right? So, nobody's sitting here with a want on this. I promise. Like I said, I get it, Sue, 100%. And don't think that since the middle of September, when we started talking about this, we rolled it to the public November 15th, and I gave my first presentation in there, what, a week later? We've lived this, and I don't want to have to do it again. Tara's right. Unfortunately, we're the sacrificial lamb. And if it comes to a point where the issues of our district help the next one down the line, that's what it has to be right now. Because we can't... We have 31 days to make this decision, and I received nice emails from Tammy and Sue, just hold this off. You don't have to vote tonight. We get it. But we've also been through this, we all have, since, well, since November. We're in a kind of a pull-the-band-aid-off mentality. 31 more days isn't going to change anything. While we wish it could, the reality of it is, if we don't file this paperwork by the end of July, we're on the hook for another whole year. And Tara, you're right. What's the state going to do? I don't know, but me sitting here with my name on these papers, I'm not willing to take that chance. That's not a risk I can run. It's not how we were taught to live and grow up here. You don't just run away from a problem. So while we don't like where the solution is, I don't like this any more than anybody, but I don't have any other choice. I'm out of options. We asked, the only way we can raise revenue in the public funding sector like it is right now, just like you know, you know better than anybody, is to ask for referendum money. And we were told, wholeheartedly, no. We didn't lose by little. We lost by 800 votes. We lost 1,400 to 400 in Waukesha County alone. So run the numbers on that. Even if we won Jefferson County by 100%, we still lose. Disgusting. Ridiculous. Heartbreaking. Every hyperbole you want to throw on it, but it is where we are. And I can't fix it. We've been open, we've been honest, we've been transparent. We told people from the get-go, if this doesn't pass, this is where we're headed. Well, how can that be? You can't just dissolve. Here's the numbers. I don't care who's been interviewed on TV, I don't care who's been interviewed in the newspaper. Here's the numbers. If they, people at Main Street say, this won't happen, DPI won't let it, that's their opinion. That's fine. I can't take that chance. I wish we could deal with action items A through D. If you all came to regular meetings, that's what this is like all the time, A through D. We'll talk about the bread contract all we want. This is a different situation. I don't want to pull my kids out of here. But I'm out of options. And everyone who's come to me and said, don't do this, don't do this, I get it, and I appreciate that. But then when we have a conversation and we talk about what's left, what could we do, we circle back to the same thing. Even if that miracle lottery ticket happens, we still need a referendum. We just lost 60/40. With the community as it is, with the district the shape and size of the way it is, we just lost 60/40. When we told them we were going to dissolve. I don't know how to fix it. We've spent five years with administration who loves this place, and who's done everything they can. We've told every story possible, and I hate to even use the word story. We've shared every fact possible about the good things that come out of this district, including my four kids. Every teacher who cares, every administrator who goes above and beyond. We've told that story for five years, yet we can't convince people to not automatically open enrollment. We have a limited tax base that doesn't want to grow. We have a major open enrollment problem, and we have declining resident enrollment. We have the trifecta of misery when it comes to public school funding.
I really don't have much to add. I just want to thank Scott, because Scott has been out in the forefront on all of this, and has been an open book to anyone who's asked a question to him. And I just appreciate that very much. As Scott said, you know, open enrollment is everything here. You know, I had looked up, there's 446 school districts in the state of Wisconsin. Out of 446, we are 10th on that list as to what we pay out in open enrollment. That is a gigantic hurdle to overcome. And, you know, this year, our kids, you know, our class of 70 kids roughly getting $541,000 worth of scholarships. Last year's class getting $800,000 worth of scholarships. Every kid who applied for a scholarship received one. How many school districts can say that? We are a gem of a district, whatever anybody wants to say. There are always going to be... I've got three boys. My boys are not college kids. My boys are trade kids. I have a son who has special needs, and he's one of those kids who, you know, I'm going to put it out there, you know, his ACT score was horrible. He has special needs. He scored a 14. Okay? That's going to bring our kids who are getting the 32s, it's going to bring them down. There's just no way, when we're dealing with smaller numbers, when we're dealing with, because we have districts around us who refuse to take any special needs kids, we're welcoming those kids. We're taking those kids on, and we're giving them the education that they deserve. And those things affect our scores. And we have... This board has done the due diligence. That's why I ran four years ago, because I sat back going, well, it can't be that bad. Why can't we get past this? Why can't we go... I've tried. All of us have tried. And I've told this story many times, when you move into this district and you've got people who have never stepped foot into our schools, who are just instantly saying, hmm, don't go out there, it's not a good school. It is such a hurdle to get over, and I think, I think the stars that I didn't listen to that 15 years ago when we moved out here, because my children benefited so much from this district. And I want to thank every single teacher, every single admin, every single person who works in this district, because they have done a phenomenal job. And people sit back and say, why didn't you cut this? Why did you cut that? You have to remember, we brought people on because we were listening to people's complaints. We were listening to people who were saying that they wanted better test scores, they wanted us to deal with any bullying issues. So we brought on those admin people to do that, and then we get knocked for having them. So I just, again, want to thank Scott. I want to thank everyone on this board. I want to thank our parents and everyone who, you know, are here tonight. I wish everyone had been here in the past to help support us with this board. But you know what? I'll take it when you're here, and I appreciate everyone, and thank you so much for fighting for us these last few months.
Hearing no other comment, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. We'll do this by roll call vote, please, Tracy. To approve the resolution ordering dissolution of the district.
Carrie Alice. Justin Thomas. Tara Bowman. Scott Hoff.
Yes.
Cory Jones. Matt Mecca. Amy Wild.
Sorry, we couldn't better, guys. All right. Steve, should we just skip you tonight? You got any... Give me the top three highlights. Let's put a little gravity in the room.
Oh, you don't want Matt to do open mic, I don't think.
No, I don't want you to do open mic.
I just wanted to thank everyone for their support, those in the audience and those unable to be with us this evening, for their ongoing and continued support of our school district. We'd also like to thank Annette Kozlowski for her efforts securing those bids for food service for the upcoming school year, and also to let you know that deeply appreciated to our maintenance and custodial staff, who now, a month basically into the summer, have been working diligently to prepare the buildings for next school year. Couple of congratulations. Once again, our varsity golf team was recognized by the Wisconsin Golf Coaches Association for individual academic all-state honors. Typically, those kids do very, very well in the classroom, as well as on the golf course. Tracy and I are scheduled for some Neola policy work on Tuesday, the 23rd of July. A reminder, the high school roof, scheduled work to begin the end of July, weather permitting, and work on the high school gymnasium to begin August the 5th. Registration for the new school year will be held a little earlier than typical. We'll actually open registration July the 22nd through the 31st. I'll be sending out a communication with information related to registration after the 4th of July holiday. Currently working on... Currently working on back-to-school in-service, as well as various open houses, and that information will be included in that Connect Five message as well. And I think for this evening, that's adequate.
Thank you. Any comments or announcements from anybody? Upcoming meetings, events, curriculum and policy will be Thursday, August 8th. All regular committee and a regular board meeting will be on August 13th. The board will now consider a motion to adjourn the closed session. The board will consider a motion to move to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 19.851(c), to wit, to consider employment compensation and evaluation data regarding one or more employees over which the board exercises jurisdiction and responsibility, to wit, consideration of individual staffing for the 2019-2020 school year. Tracy, can we have another roll call, please?
Carrie Alice?
Yes.
Tara Bowman?
Yes.
Yes.
Cory Jones?
Yes.
All right.
15 minutes to get some, have a drink of water and a little composure.